Are you guys ready? Are you ready?
Yeah.
Eric, are you ready? Okay. So I'm gonna call this public hearing to order. In attendance this evening are supervisors Fisher, Agizio, Flair, Cassiolis, Savavic. In addition, our township engineer, Dan Dizeroth, our solicitor, Gretchen Moore. If you plan to participate in tonight's hearing, can I ask you to please stand so you can be sworn in by our court reporter? If you're gonna speak at all, or think you might speak at all, I would stand and get sworn in now.
So I'll swear affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Is there anyone here this evening that is seeking standing? Okay. So this public hearing is to consider conditional use application 2021-0024 filed by Miranda Holmes for the Silver Creek Cluster Housing Development off of Rising Road, McDonald, PA. Tax parcel 140-007-000019-00. The public hearing was duly advertised on August 4th and August 9th. Just, if I could ask you to state your name, and if you're with a company, or your name and address when you come, and please make sure you're speaking into a microphone. Thank you.
Good evening. Ed Moore with Scheffler &amp; Company. Tonight we'll have a brief presentation on the new Silver Creek Single Family Residential Cluster Development, and then we'll turn everything over to questions. So also with me tonight is Michael Seedorf from Miranda Holmes, and from David E. Woesten Associates, Josh Haydo, who can talk traffic for us. First off, the Cecil Township zoning map, just to give you an idea of where the property is. The property is zone R1, low-density residential. We are proposing a cluster development, and it is a conditional use. The total property is 138.41 acres, and we have frontage along Rising Road. Rising, sorry. When we first take a look at the project, we took a look at the existing conditions in the site analysis plan. What this plan shows you here, the red is the steeper slopes. We also have in blue the wetlands and streams delineated. And then we took our limited disturbance, and that's the dark black line there, and superimposed it over top of this plan. And the goal is to avoid the steeper slopes as much as possible. What you can see we've done there is a lot of white where we're developing. And then we've also avoided the wetlands and the streams. We took a look at the zoning requirements for the cluster zoning. The one column is required by your ordinance, the second one's what we propose. The front yard setback required by code is 25 feet. We are proposing 25 feet. The side yard setback is 15 feet total, or five-foot minimum. We're proposing 7.5 feet each side, or 15 feet total. Minimum lot width as per code is 65 feet. We're proposing 66 is the smallest. Our minimum lot area is 10,890 square feet by code, and that's our smallest lot. The maximum building height will be 35 feet, which we adhere to. And the density permitted is two dwelling units per acre, or 277 units permitted, and we're proposing 229 units. So as you can see by your ordinance, we're meeting all these requirements. Benefits of a cluster development, it's a compact development. There's more dedicated open space than conventional zoning. There's less earth disturbance, and we preserve more natural feature, streams, wooded slopes, and wildlife habitat. The proposed plan, you see here, the white box is the proposed homes. Again, there are 229 single-family residential lots. The entrance to the site is directly across from the beltway ramp. We have open space, it's part of the dark green, as well as the wooded areas to remain is the dark green. Sidewalks on each side of the street are proposed. There'll be a mailbox cluster towards the entrance where people can park, get their mail. We're also proposing perimeter buffer yards. There's wetlands and streams that are delineated that will remain undisturbed. There will be three stormwater management detention basins to control the runoff. The project will be constructed in phases, although at this time, we're not sure how many phases it will be. And the development will be served by both public sewer and public water. Typical lot layout, this is a really exciting slide, it shows a typical lot. The key point of this is, a lot of times, we get a question of, is the driveway's long enough to park a car in? From the face of the building, this shows we have 29 feet to the start of the sidewalk, so it's plenty big enough to put a car in the driveway without overhanging the sidewalk. So that's the main purpose of this slide here. When you talk open space and buffer yards, this plan here in the green is the proposed open space. The open space required is a minimum of 50% of the gross site area. And 138.41 acres were required to have 69.2 acres of open space. The current plan proposes 69.49 acres of open space. And the open space will be owned by the future HOA, and will remain in a natural and undisturbed condition in perpetuity. Also required a 25-foot buffer yard along the entire perimeter. We're providing that, that's shown here in red. Again, this will be owned by the future Homeowners Association, and will remain in a natural and undisturbed condition in perpetuity. Stormwater control, as I mentioned, there's three stormwater detention basins. They're proposed to control the peak runoff rates, and provide volume control of any increase in the impervious areas. And these basins will be designed to your township standards. For a little talk on traffic, I'm gonna turn it over to Josh to just discuss that for a minute.
Good evening, everybody. Josh Haydo with David Woesten Associates. We will be preparing the traffic study for this development.
If it's easier, you can hold that microphone so you don't have to lean over. There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We will be conducting a traffic study for this development. The access along Rising Road will require a highway occupancy permit from Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. So the traffic study has already been scoped with PennDOT District 12, which this is in. Given its proximity to District 11, they also participated in the scoping meeting, as well as representatives of Cecil Township and the Gateway Engineers. So the intersections that we're gonna be looking at are circled here in blue. The front door, obviously, are the main access to the development here, coming off the new road that goes up to the beltway. Additionally, Rising Road, where it meets Miller's Run Road, those two intersections that are kind of clustered together right there, just beyond the railroad overpass. I mean, the railroad overpass is something that we've also been asked to evaluate. We understand that that road is quite narrow underneath. Site distance, looking through it, it can be limited. So that has been a prescribed item that we're going to be looking at much more closely in the traffic study. But at this point, we have not conducted the study, we have only scoped it. When school gets back in session, we can, you know, get that on the schedule and prepare the study as soon as Miranda authorizes us to do that. But with the information I have, I am here primarily tonight to answer any questions as best I can. So I'm gonna turn it back over to Ed to finish his presentation, but I'll be back up for questions at the end.
Some sample building elevations of what these units will probably look like. You can see that in front of you. The average home size between 1,800 square feet and 3,200 square feet, and the cost of the homes anywhere from the upper $300,000 to the upper $400,000. We received a letter from Gateway, a review letter on July 13th. We addressed those comments and resubmitted plans on July 15th. And at this point, we'll open it up to any questions you might have.
May I just comment for the record that our review of the plan just was a review of the application submission, that they had, there's certain requirements within the submission for the conditional use. That's what our comments were related to. We really didn't, we don't have any comments on the plan at this point, because the plan is just being submitted for the use at this time.
I have a couple things. How, why are you planting on your sidewalks, Ben?
Whatever's to code, I believe it's four feet, but whatever's required.
Well, we've been making them four feet, right? And the second thing is, you show no overflow parking.
Right, they're all, they're all single-family homes, we assume.
Doesn't matter. I want overflow parking somewhere. I mean, we've done it with Ryan and everybody else.
There was a question that was, you got to use something else?
The other thing is, is this wooded area between...
Let me see if I can call it back up.
On the right, between these lots, it shows on this print that it's... On this print here, it shows like vegetation. Is there gonna be vegetation between these, this row of houses in the top and a row on the bottom?
Yeah, everything there that's in the dark green is vegetation, remain.
I'm in between the two streets.
Are you talking in the big loop?
Yeah, he sees it on this drawing, it's not on that drawing, it's up, he sees these here, between the back-to-back lots.
Probably not, there'll probably be grading all in through there, so any of the trees that are in that area will be removed.
What's that representing, those little squiggly lines, then?
I'd have to see, I don't know if they're contours?
No, no, no.
It looks like a tree buffer.
If we can keep those trees when we're done with grading, we will. That's probably what that represents, is there's probably not grading on the grading plan in that area. So those trees will remain if there's no grading.
And if there is?
Will be gone.
And it'll be put back like that?
Excuse me, can you keep your voice up, we're talking to the microphone? I didn't hear your question.
Can you repeat your question?
Never mind, I don't have one yet.
Okay.
Looking at these contours, is that a valley between them houses?
I believe so, yes.
And that's where the water's gonna flow?
And we'll take a look at the stormwater that happens between the lots, and we'll have inlets and pipe everything to the stormwater basin, so we'll take a look at that. We have a lot of engineering left to do on these plans, but yeah, we'll take a look at that.
I'd like, definitely wanna see overflow parking on both ends of the development.
That stream that's located on there, the starting place is where?
Which stream are you talking about?
The one that runs through that center portion? Of the driveway?
That's not a stream.
Is there streams?
Yeah.
Yeah, where does that start at? Yeah. Where's it coming from?
Well, you can see on, maybe on the color map, it stands out a little better for you. You can see it starts at the top of the property, and it'll cross our site and go under our new road.
And then under the new road? What happens to it? I don't see where it goes after that.
It goes back in its natural course at that point. So, yeah, maybe the plans aren't clear enough where it ends.
All this water leads down...
To the stream in the front.
All this, all this water leads towards the stream that's down along Creedmore, where we're replacing the bridge.
Then into Miller's Run.
Yes, and then eventually to Miller's Run, yes.
Should that be drawn on there, or shown where it continues on?
So the purpose of this exercise is just, I mean, there's a lot that needs shown on these plans. So it's really, it's really the question of the conditional use of the property within the, in the R1 for cluster that the board is deciding on. You'll have a lot of other opportunity to review plans if this moves on. They have to, each individual plant phase will be, you know, the overall plan has to be approved for engineering, and then they have to do individual plans as they come in for the development. So, again, it's more of, do you think this is appropriate for a cluster development on this property? And are there any conditions that you want to apply to that as a conditional use?
Okay.
I wanted to comment on, I passed out to everybody this drawing here. This, this is from our ordinance book. Ed, you mentioned several times, three times, I think, the open space buffer yards.
Yes, sir.
I mean, if you've seen this in our ordinance, it's envisioned to look like. Every, every lot fronts an open space. This is, I mean, this area in the middle, it's a typical, those lots are back-to-back, where we're on refer to. I mean, where's the buffer yard for any of those houses there? This is a concept where it's supposed to be, you know, for privacy. They have smaller lots, but they still have some privacy because of the access, like frontage, is this, shows on, on... Individual lots, on open space. This looks like just a typical city, huh? Well, typical layout. I mean, where's, how are all these people, even on this far side over here, on that edge there, and up around that edge, they're budding just that 25-foot required perimeter buffer? But the ordinance always talks about the developers encouraged to provide privacy by other means, other than a large front yard. And it's, that's what this is supposed to represent. I mean, they don't have a single lot like that.
I'm sure Miranda would be amenable to, you know, where those lots back up to each other? Is planting some buffer in between those back of lots to help offer those?
It's not, it's not just a planting buffer so much as, it's supposed to be a cluster development where all the lots seem to have access to wild and natural area, not just some linear screen right on the property line.
If you go up to Windsor Woods where Miranda developed, that house, there's slakers only 50 feet between the backs. They're right up against, nobody has no privacy at all. I wouldn't like to see that again.
I mean, if you look, if the board members, if you look at this on page 129 that I sent, I mean, that's what was envisioned as a cluster development. And like I said, there's not one lot like this that meets or matches that at all. It's just like as if you laid out a subdivision on all the good property and all the steep slopes, it was just avoided to meet the 50%. Dan, did you get a copy of this?
Yeah, I'm aware of that, yes.
I mean, do you see any lots that meet that, that look like that diagram at all?
Well, I think that this, as you point out, the circle, circular street to the left has more, you know, people can look into open space.
Right.
From those rear lots, and then the perimeter lots get to look at open space or natural ground, whereas this is more like a typical block and lot, as you said.
I mean, was any consideration given to what we envisioned as a cluster development? I was here when the township adopted, we had experts come in and help us put a cluster development together when the ordinance was first written, and that's, it was geared towards privacy, to help the developer use, you know, be creative and use smaller lots, but to still give them, afford them the ability to have wide-open spaces at their houses.
Yeah, it's difficult in that portion you were just referring to, because of the streams and the wetlands on the top portion of the site. We can't really push it and open it up, that interior as much, and there's steep slopes to the, to the bottom of the site too that's constricting. So it was tough to open that circle up, if you will, like we did on the left.
All right.
How far is it between them lots?
It's, he said.
I believe each lot is 160-some feet deep.
There was another remark brought up at the Planning Commission by Budovic, that she talked about, or asking you for two entrances. Was that addressed, or did you guys look into that?
We did.
And your findings?
As you can see on your screen here, we have possibly two options. This one option comes, as you can see, to the, I guess I'll say, north of the treatment plant. This will be an emergency access road, 15 feet or so wide, about 15% slope, so it's not real steep, paved, and some gates at both ends to keep people from using it. So there's one option that we can get people out over to Creedmore, and then the second option too would be... And this, it's kind of tough to see here, but this entrance would be 30 feet or so wide, so three lanes wide up to the first intersection. So it's wider than a typical, typical street. And this is if one of the lanes was shut down, or a couple of lanes were shut down, there'd be room enough, because it would be wide enough to skirt by. So those were two options that we thought of for emergency accesses.
So that you're aware, on that point, Gretchen and I were just over here talking, we have adopted the International Fire Code, and part of the code requires that one or two dwelling residential developments, developments of one or two family dwellings where the number of the dwellings exceeds 30 units shall be provided with two separate and approved fire apparatus access roads, which is two entrances. And it says, there's an exception, but the exception requires that the homes be sprinkled, which I'm, they're not gonna be sprinkled. So there's a requirement, the way that our solicitor and I read that, that the International Fire Code requires two entrances and exits.
Can you, are you gonna address that yet?
Other than what we have here, I have no other comment on what our thoughts were on getting emergency access in and out, a second entrance.
All right.
So just so that you're aware, in the future planning of it, it is required.
Yeah, I mean, we can't get to the back, I believe that's Nepali back there, is that the name of the street?
North DePauli.
We just, we have to buy property to get to that point. And then to get out on the other side of Rising Road, it's just that topography is too steep, so it's a challenge to get two ways in and out.
One other thing, it says the cluster development subdivision provisions will accomplish the township's goals and objectives by providing flexible development options in those areas where standard rectilinear development patterns are not suitable due to physical conditions. So you have physical conditions, and it seems like you went back to just a typical PRD, rather than trying to accomplish what the goal was. I mean, to me, this looks like a PRD, and actually more dense PRD.
Is there a reason that you chose cluster over PRD?
Well, you can't do a PRD in R1.
Yeah, you can't.
You have to request a zoning change to R2 to get to, ask for a PRD.
Tom, are you done? I have a couple questions. I don't want to jump in if you're still asking.
Well, I just think he's not ready to comment on, those are the things that we have to discuss, you know, for, you know, before we can consider approval. But, and I know you're not ready to discuss it, but like the things she mentioned, the things I mentioned, the things Ron mentioned, and Eric, we need to...
I have a couple more questions or things to consider. Mike, one question is, how far off of DePauli is it? Do you know, north of DePauli?
Mike, you have to know that? Off the top of my head.
So that is something like I would like to know, is, because there are homes that set off north of DePauli, and residents are asking how far down this development is gonna be from their existing homes. And then the, the traffic study, that is a serious concern for me. I drive Rising, because that's the area that I live, where that turn is under the railroad tracks. So I am curious when that, you expect that traffic study to be completed, because that would be something that needs to be seriously considered, yeah, before approval could be given by this board.
I don't know at this time. The study was not a requirement of the, of the conditional use, I don't believe, Ed. But regardless, we would at least have to wait until school is back in session.
Okay.
At the very earliest, it would be.
The conditional use also says there's listed conditions that are express criteria and standards, plus any other conditions that the board has to apply. So I mean, it might not have been a written condition, but as she mentioned, it's something that, you know, it's a condition that's, you know, we're gonna have, so.
You can make it a condition, but coming into this meeting tonight, we haven't been authorized to do the study, and a big part of that is because, since it's been scoped, school has been out of session, and PennDOT is requiring that we don't do a study until school is back in session, so.
Which makes sense. I just think, just so that you're aware, that is something this board is going to take into serious consideration before approving the plan. So I would, whoever you need to tell that we've asked and stressed the importance of a traffic study, and the results of that traffic study before it's approved, I would make that known.
Understood.
Thank you.
On that note of the trestle, there was discussion brought up at the Planning Commission, and you mentioned you were gonna investigate the train and the tracks, or whether its use, or how is your study? Have you, have you done any further study on that, the train?
No, not at this, not at this time.
Okay.
We believe that that's, I'm under the, I'm under the impression that that is an active rail line.
Yes, it is. It's very active.
It absolutely is.
Yeah, which very much limits anybody's ability to do anything to widen that, that passage.
I just think, this is personal opinion, but I think realistically, the adding more traffic onto that road is gonna be tough.
Well, what we expect to, what we expect to come out of the study, given the new interchange, you know, the road itself, and I don't know what the name of the road is now that crosses over the beltway, the new road. The ramps to the beltway are anticipated to open this fall. So by the time this development is there, you know, we would expect people given the option to get on the beltway going in either direction, to go toward the airport or to 79. That's even likely probably gonna be the fastest way to get to the Bridgeville area. I can't give you exact numbers now without the benefit of having done the study, but we'd expect a lot more people to be going out that way than out Rising underneath the trestle. But, again, that's something we've been asked by PennDOT, and the township, and your consultant to look at very closely in the study, and I assure you, we're going to be very diligent and come back with very specific detailed information about that. But at this time, that's all I know.
I'm just, I mean, I believe you, and I think that makes sense, except for that's a toll road. So are you gonna jump, are you gonna leave your neighborhood every single day and jump on a toll road to get in any direction versus literally going how, not very far, not even a quarter of a mile over to the right and jumping on 50 and getting there for free? So that's what, like, these are things that I think would need to be seriously considered during your traffic study. Like, yes, it's easier and more direct, but you have to pay for it, which adds up quickly.
One thing that did come up at the scoping meeting, and I, this may have changed since then, but PennDOT did tell us that the beltway will be free in that area, at least going east or southeastbound, so to get to 79, as we understand it, will be free. I don't know when the tolls are gonna begin as you're heading.
I've never heard that, but that would be great.
And again, my information is based on a meeting that we had several months ago, so. That may not be...
Yeah, I haven't heard that either.
...no longer be correct, but that's certainly something that's gonna be taken into account.
Yeah, okay.
Are people gonna pay a toll to save a minute?
Yeah, probably not. Some other things just to keep in mind, since we did adopt the International Fire Code, is there are hydrant requirements, so I would make sure that when you're planning that you have access to this, and we can get you it if you need it, the International Fire Code, to double-check the hydrant requirements. Any other questions?
Yeah. Dan, I think given what's been going on in the other development, every corner sidewalk is crushed. Do we need to make these radiuses bigger or something?
We can, yeah, maybe increase them from like 25 feet to, 25 feet to 35 feet in some cases.
You saw them, they're all crushed.
Yeah, I agree, that's a good comment. Especially with the pre-made homes, they're bringing the big trucks in to take them all the way.
The other concern that I see with the map is that those cul-de-sacs are different places, or I, snow removal, how's that gonna happen through that big flux?
Typically, the cul-de-sacs will reserve a snow easement at the end of the, at the cul-de-sac, so those homeowners are aware that that's where the snow is being pushed, so we can create easements of where those.
Yeah, but there's only one, there's only one. What do you do up at the other end? What do you do on the long straightaway?
I think there's areas to put the snow, I mean, we haven't really thought of snow removal for this, to be honest.
Please do.
Any other questions from the board?
You will be putting handicap ramps on all these sidewalks, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's important. Okay, if there's no other questions, and you're done with your presentation, I'm gonna open it up for comments to the floor, so they can ask us questions. If we feel the need to ask you, we may ask you again, but for right now, I'm just gonna open it up to the floor. If anybody has any questions or concerns, please step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Please to direct your comments and questions to us and the board and then we can ask, we can either answer them or get clarification. Thank you. I know, sorry.
Alright, Kara Shirdon, fifty-eight, north of DePauli.
Is that your name?
Kara. Kara Shirdon, S-H-I-R-D-O-N. Uh, just a couple of questions, um, do we know what the, well, I, I'd like to know what the width of the road, if, if there's gonna be on-street parking permitted in this location?
No parking is permitted per ordinance.
So, yeah, the overflow parking to me, if anybody has a get-together or anything like that, there's really nowhere for anybody to go. It's like Apple Hill, I, my sister lives there now and you drive up there and people are pulled onto their driveways or you can't even turn around to get out. So, either, you know, the width of the road I would look at and also be concerned about overflow parking for get-togethers. Do we have any comment about the sewage capacity? Are we okay with what we have from a sewage perspective?
Go ahead, Dan.
Uh, it's a, I, I would assume that there's capacity at the Millers Run Plant, there was extra capacity built in the plant, but Ed, have you talked to Walt Oshinsky?
We've just had brief preliminary conversations with him, we haven't gotten that far, but I don't think there's any issues. He hasn't expressed any issues, put that way.
Yeah, they'd like the customers, yeah, that's true.
And I guess part of my, uh, question is around this whole concept of, uh, of a cluster development and I haven't read all the documentation as that, how that differs from the, the PRD and really what is it, so in R1, you're saying that a PRD is not permitted, but cluster developments are. So, can anybody explain what the difference between a cluster development and a PRD is?
Tom, best explain that, or Dan?
Well, the, the idea of the cluster development, again, if you read the ordinance, it's to take advantage of, uh, making a smaller, denser development uh, while observing the environmental conditions of the property. Uh, Tom brought to light the, the other part of that, which is to still provide privacy while you're doing it. Uh, a PRD is, is typically, and the, and, and the cluster development is all single-family homes. A PRD can typically be different types of housing, can include towns, it can include single-family houses in, in different dimensions and there can be even be, uh, other components to a, 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 a PRD, including maybe a store or a playground or other things that are required. This, this was, this was, this was something that was brought to the board many years ago and Tom remembers because there was no other option to do anything in R1 to, to, uh, again, get a little more density. Uh, from, from the township's perspective, the, the better part of this is we get less roads to maintain and less infrastructure to deal with because the lots are smaller. You know, that, that's the advantage, but it's still only being developed as, as an R1 could be. So, if you looked at this property just in an R1 frame, you could put, uh, you know, up to two lots per acre in R1, they'd just be bigger lots. And they would use more of the land and they would try to develop around it, whether they could, you know, put together an R1 that would get them the same lot yield, probably not. They can maybe get close to it, but it's just much more expensive and it, it, you know, it ends up being, building a lot more streets. So, it's just a, 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 just a, a different type of an ordinance really for single-family and, uh, it, it's, it's usefulness as I, as I already described.
Uh, the other thing is, the word cluster came from where there's a little cluster of homes, like in a little village, a little cluster here, a little cluster here, and it's all surrounded by the green space that's left or the common open areas. This is just a perfect linear development, I mean, it just goes straight through the property and it's, it's a typical R1 with a lot more small lots.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing I was gonna bring up was, I, like, you were saying there's more, where, green space, but that's really just behind, well, far behind the houses and it looks like that's great, it is, would there be an opportunity to have with, with that many homes, a playground or something for kids to be able to walk to and, and visit, um, you know, because there's, they're, like, if they wanna play a game of ball or something like that, or could we allow for something like that?
It's a way that says create, they have to create a system of integrated walking and biking trails to connect the new developments with natural areas and perhaps existing neighborhoods to encourage alternate, uh, means to travel.
Really quick too, that was something that, again, our solicitor and I just brought up, make sure that you're reading this because it does say under the ordinance, creating a system of integrated walking and biking trails to connect new developments with natural areas and existing neighborhoods to encourage alternate means of travel to the automobile, that's not included in your plan. There's also, it says, providing open space areas which will provide the residents with active and passive recreational opportunities and permit some innovative community living projects, again, not. So, you know, to Kara's point and to Tom's point, this feels very much more like a PRD than what, how the cluster development is planned per our ordinance.
Um, I also had the comment about the snow removal, cause I've sat in the same meetings, um, that Mr. Savavik has where that's been brought up as a problematic issue, it doesn't really look like there's anywhere for snow to go, um, with at least what I'm looking at on that plan. And then, um, uh, let's see here, I thought I had one more thing, so I might be done. I think, I think that's it for now. Oh, no, I remember what it is now. Um, the other thing regarding the traffic study, I know that at one point in time, and I don't know where all this stands, so you'll have, you'll have to tell me, that there was some talk about also maybe regarding some of the well pads around using Rising Road as a route of transport. So, if, if that is the case or is going to happen at any point in time, we should be considering the, that truck traffic in addition to this, this house uh, traffic as well. So, I don't remember which, I think it was Connor Samuels, and I know that one was rejected, but, uh, if it's under appeal, if there's any kind of truck traffic that will be taking Rising Road, that that, they should consider that as part of their traffic study.
I can double check, I don't remember because they couldn't clear that train trestle underpass, so maybe it's Rising Road coming the other way. We can definitely check it, but I don't remember specifically truck traffic using. It might have been Rising to like Grange or something, like from the other direction.
Right.
I, I can't imagine that, they, they wouldn't make it under the trestle.
Okay, that's the, I just remembered it, at one point it being mentioned, I could, that could have changed or whatever, but I would just say that would be something that I would wanna double check, so, that's.
No, I was gonna ask Ed something next.
Yep, here, thanks.
Ed, and just to keep in mind though, it also says, uh, on locating individual house sites, locate the approximate sites for individual houses in close proximity to the common open space area. And I mean, some of these on this upper area, they do, and it's, I think that's about the only area in the inner lots on that circle. I mean, they meet that, but the rest of them just, I mean, in no way, shape or form would they even resemble that at all.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they don't abut the open space, they don't open, the backyards aren't to the open space, but there, there, there is connectivity, you can get to that open space through the plan. You can walk to it.
But, that's not how the ordinance.
Well, how, how though, those middle lots on this street, they'd have to walk through somebody's yard, I mean, you didn't, you didn't even, I, I've seen some developments out west where they leave a walking access, uh, between two lots, it's, you know, for a pedestrian walkway, there's not a one here for those people, I mean, how, you know, center lots up there, how would they get to the green space?
We can certainly take a look at adding.
Well, I'm not advocating that, I'm just saying that, that, that the intent, it just, it seems like it's just a PRD.
I, I think the, the, the trouble with the, the cluster and, and I know that this isn't maybe your concern, well, there's a lot of single-loaded streets in the, in the kinda cluster development, at least the map that, that we were presented with, um, and single-loaded streets are very difficult to, to develop, um, without housing on one side of them, so. You know, we'll, we'll take, we'll take your comments into consideration.
It's expensive to develop, right, when you say difficult, you mean expensive, not physical.
It's expensive.
Any other comments or questions from anyone in the audience? Just if you could state your name, when you step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Ken Murra, eighteen ninety-one Rising Road.
You can hold, Jack, show, ha- have him hold it, so then you don't have to lean over like that.
Take it out there.
Can you spell your name? Asking the spells, can you spell your name for the?
M-U-R-A.
Thank you.
Eighteen ninety-one Rising Road. Alright, concerning truck traffic. On Rising Road, the toll road maintenance yard, I don't know how many tri-axle dump trucks came in off of nine eighty down Rising Road to the toll road. So, if this is gonna go in, how many trucks are gonna come in off of nine eighty? It's a ten-ton weight limit on nine, on Rising Road. And you got that little bridge at, um, just up the road from here where, um.
I know what you mean.
Uh, what the heck's the name of that little?
Yeah.
Tomahawk claim. That's a, that's your, probably your ten-ton weight limit. So.
Sure, weren't most of those trucks delivering for construction, for, for that site and for that, I mean, it was a, it was during construction, right? That all those tri-axle trucks were doing?
Yeah, there's ten, yes. Tri-axle dump trucks, twenty, twenty-five ton, tri-axle dump trucks, fully loaded, come down that Rising Road from nine eighty going to the, the only place they would have to go to is the construction area for the toll road. When they were built, while they were building the, uh, maintenance yard, alright?
Dan, PennDOT probably inspected that bridge before they let him use it, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so part of the problem you have to keep in mind is nine eighty and Rising are state roads, so we don't have jurisdiction, we can't limit or enforce that. Wait.
How many places of Rising Road collapsing?
I, I, I drive it every day, I, I understand and.
I drive it every day too.
And unfortunately, I wish there was something that we could do, but because it's a state road, we ask, we continually ask the state to repair.
They did a little bit of repair just past Tomahawk claim where the road was dipping.
Yep, literally falling off.
Now, and now it's also sinking again.
Yep.
Collapsing up or around twenty-two hundred Rising Road.
Yep.
The, the hillside's starting to give way.
Yep.
So, I mean.
I.
And what, what, I wanna see, like, okay, I see this road, it, it, this plan, it's a lot of houses. I'm no tree hugger, but fifty percent to me is not enough. That's a whole wooded area that is, that is gonna be, losing a lot of trees that everybody's being environmental conscious nowadays, so. And why quarter-acre lots? Quarter-acre lot, third of an acre lot, that, that's just too, too, too close together. I said my piece.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? So, if this board's not opposed, I think we still have a ton of unanswered questions, I think this hearing needs to be continued um, to allow the applicant to provide us with answers to some of these questions.
Or address the.
Yeah.
Address it as opposed to just answer it.
Address it, answer it, same thing. Get us a response is what we're basically asking for. Um, so we can continue it into September, give you some time. Let me get my calendar. Is anyone opposed to, what day, this is a two, or this is a Monday, Monday, September thirteenth? Is that good? Okay, so we're gonna continue this public hearing for, till Monday, September thirteenth at seven PM. Um, and our expectation would be that most, if not all of these questions are answered. Anybody else before that we close, or before we continue this hearing? Okay, hearing continued. Oh, I'm sorry, we have a late one to the, sorry, come on up, you're fine.
Okay, uh, my name's Bill Andrews and, uh, me and my wife are the owners of Silver Creek Nursery. I'm pretty sure is, probably don't like me too much because you know we're gonna sell our land, but there's a reason why I'm doing this. For one thing, you know, John, he's a, he owns a lot of land and he wants to develop it, okay? I can understand that, he wants to develop it. But, reason why I got rid of it is because when Cecil Township let him build a sewage plant down there, they built it too close to the creek, okay?
I would ask that you just address our, just talk to us.
What's that?
Just address the board with your comments.
Oh, okay, yeah, well, when he, that, when they built the sewage plant, they built it too close to the creek, okay? Now, I confronted DEP about it, then they told me, well, they're on Christmas vacation, as soon as they come back, they'll go down and take a look. Never showed up. Okay, now, when I have floods, I have real big floods. Let me see if I can get it on here. I just want you to know the reason why I sold the land. John, you wanna try to get this on for me, to show the board this? Okay, when they built this sewage plant, they built it up high, they built it close to the creek. Now, DEP told us that they would be fifty feet away from the creek, they didn't. They're building right up against the creek, okay? Now, this was just not recently, this was about a month ago. Now, I want you to take a look at that, it looks like a river down there. All our land, the greenhouses that we had down there, I lost thousands of dollars worth of, my ground cover, okay? So, it's no use, I had to build my greenhouses up high. Matter of fact, Mrs. Andrews, there's an Andrews family, she lives up her, on Rising Road, okay? And when that flooded, her trailer floods. This woman lives by herself in a small trailer, her land floods by that little bridge right there, okay? Another thing went bad too is that when they built the Beltway, now they got more water coming down there. And the, the big issue with me is the reason why I got rid of the land is because there's just too much water that comes down the bottom of our land anymore. My bridge just washed out, I gotta go down there and I gotta clean out the debris all the time because debris comes down there. There's no issue, what, what I do, if they build this, they gotta take, I want you guys to make sure that you watch what they build down there is because they gotta have enough of a, a bridge there to where that water can go through. Because if they don't, it's gonna flood Rising Road farther up, then other people are gonna suffer up there. That's why I got rid of my land, our business isn't good no more, you know? So, when the opportunity come with Miranda wanting to buy it, hey, I took it, you know? I'm, I'm seventy years old, it's time for me to retire, get out of this. I, I feel sorry for these people, I know, I don't wanna see anything built around there too. I like to hunt, I like to, I like to do this just as much as anybody else.
Again, I'd ask you to just address the board.
What's that?
Just speak to us at the board, not the audience.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But, uh, all I do is want you just board to look and make sure when they build the road going across there that, that it's, it's, it's enough to where the water can go through. Because, I don't know, huh, you know, I, I, I talked to some of you guys and they, they said that they're gonna build a big enough of a tunnel to go through there for the water to go through. And, uh, I, you know, I hope it's, it, it's true, I hope it can, it can really go through there. But, uh, you know, it, it's just the reason why I got rid of the land. I can't handle this no more.
You don't have to give any reason why you're selling your land, property owners have rights and you have the right to sell it to whoever you want.
Right.
And we can't stop somebody from selling their property or even developing their property, I mean, we can set.
Yeah, but when they built the sewage plant.
We can set conditions on it, on how they do it and what, what they do, but we can't, if they, if, if you wanna sell it to the developer and they wanna develop it, I mean, you don't owe any apology for that, you have a right to sell it.
Right, right, and if I try to sell my land, if, if they don't want it and I sell my land, who's gonna want it when it's flooding all the time? I can't sell land over people wanna, where people are gonna build down there and it's gonna flood. I actually had to build my land up high to put my greenhouses because I had like about nine foot of water come up by that creek. Four foot close to the, where my greenhouses are and about nine to twelve foot in the back. It just took all my greenhouses and washed them away, so, that's what I'm saying, you, when you, when you do something here, make sure you do it right.
Let me, let me ask you a question, did you take a photo the day that we had like four inches of rain in forty-five minutes?
Right. Right.
Well, yes, I mean, so the whole Zany Farm was underwater. Edge, pond and everything was underwater.
Well, when you built the sewage plant, when you built the sewage plant, you just didn't even think of that.
We didn't build it. I mean, it's already did.
But Cecil Township got a sewage plant.
That's not what's creating the flooding.
Even when I asked for water, where my land is, they bring water up there. Now, they rode all through DePauli Road and all them roads, they built the water all the way around. When I asked them to build water to me, they said, no, they're not going that far. So I really actually don't have anything. I don't have sewage, I don't have water, and all I have is electricity. I don't have gas, you know? So I'm pretty basically living the way I have to live up there.
But what I'm saying is, you're getting flooded from up through the valley. That day, it was tremendous.
The Beltway is no help with this.
There's no developments on Rising Road. I mean, it was just a monsoon.
Oh, yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. The water will come up all the time.
Bednar told me on his rain gauge, there was four inches of rain in 45 minutes. I mean, that's enough to flood anybody out.
Right.
I think, I think everybody along Rising actually got flooded.
It never flooded that bad, but now since they built the sewage plant, they bottlenecked it. And when they bottlenecked it, their water has nowhere to go, and it backs up now. Now it's even worse than what it used to be. I'd be afraid of a big storm. If there's a big storm, it's going to get really bad.
I would just ask if you're going to comment, you're more than welcome to comment, but could you come to the microphone and state your name, just because we have a court report, well, and so other people can hear you, but.
Okay, well, that's all I got to say, so.
That's fine, thank you. Anybody else?